Let's try that again. Today is Monday, January 8. Welcome to the work session Pleasantville Board of Trustees. First item on our agenda, sorry to be a bit late, is a discussion with Mike Newman Superintendent Parks and Recreation regarding the summer 2024 pool and camp fees. Hello, Mike.
Hello. So. So.
Executive summary.
I'm sorry, say that again?
Go ahead, yes.
Okay. So, yeah, um, I, I, I'm back. A couple of years ago, I came to you guys with a similar presentation on essentially fees and camp and pool salaries. I don't know, are you able to pull up my PowerPoint?
Yes.
Great. Okay, uh, you can skip to page three. That's where I start getting into what I'm talking about. Alright, so, um, basically the reasons for, um, I'm gonna start with the camp and the reasons for, uh, increasing camp salaries. Currently, our junior camp and senior camp, uh, hourly rate is $11. Our teen travel is 15. Uh, you know, the, the biggest reason, uh, you know, unlike the past, whereas what other municipalities are doing is minimum wage is just every year increasing and increasing. And we, uh, you know, even making it an increase two years ago, uh, we seem to be getting further and further away from that. Um, and it just makes it a little bit harder to, uh, entice quality applicants and an abundance of quality applicants. Uh, another issue that we seem to be seeing is we have a pretty high turnover rate. It's probably close to about 60% each summer. Um, I mean, there's always gonna be some turnover, but we'd like to try to retain more of our staff, uh, for, you know, ideally two to three years. So I'm proposing to increase, uh, those hourly rates, um, to help increase the number of applicants. Probably increase staff morale, you know, a little bit higher pay, staff wants to hopefully work a little bit harder. Uh, and hopefully maybe we can keep, uh, more staff for a few more years. Uh, next slide. So I'm proposing, uh, a pretty large increase to the junior and senior camp. Uh, and mainly because I just want to try to get us closer to minimum wage and give us a fair fight with applicants. So I'm, I'm proposing a $4 increase, which would increase their base salary to $15 and increase teen travel a dollar to their, which would increase their base to 16. Uh, based on 2023's salary, uh, we're talking about a 35% increase. Uh, about 60K. So I would be asking to increase that budget line as a 7230 101 part-time staff to a total of 230 for this coming budget. And, you know, I should have started with this, but you know, the reason I'm coming to you now is we want to start sending out our, um, our returning staff contracts. Uh, so I'm hoping to get your blessing to do this, so I can send out, uh, these new hourly rates to our returning staff, our, our hopeful returning staff.
Okay.
The next slide is a uh, how to make up some of this cost. Um, so I'm proposing a 12% increase to the camp fees. Uh, this would increase us based on last year's, uh, revenue, about $55,000. So that would help, uh, cover, uh, the majority of, uh, the salary increase, uh, that I'm, that we're looking at. Um, the chart below just shows you the rates from last year. And if you go to the next slide, I have it broken down with the increases.
So junior three weeks, you, and junior six weeks, you wouldn't change?
Um. No, so, uh. Oh, sorry, I'm looking at two screens. I, I, sorry, I apologize. Um. So what I'm doing, what I'm proposing with junior and, and tiny tot is, um, so right now they're listed as, uh, is junior camp and tiny tot. It's one camp and the last couple of years, it seems to be a little bit confusing people thinking it's two camps. So instead of having two fees, because I, 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 I can't really.
I see. So you rolled it into junior.
Yes, I, I don't know why it was done that way years ago. I don't see a reason for us to have it. We would still be offering the same grade groups, but I just want to have one fee for one camp. It doesn't need to be broken down differently. So what I did with junior, senior camp is basically I took the average um, of the two and added the 12%, and that's where I came up with the new fee for junior camp.
Okay.
Which is all of junior camp and tiny tot age range. Um, so.
Mike, junior camp is the one that's told 12?
Yes, that is the half-day camp.
And have we ever, just because they're a little, like, has there ever, have we ever done it for the whole day? Like the senior camp, or it's always been like from nine to 12?
It, it, it's always been nine to 12, but it is funny you talk about that. We, we have kind of been talking about that, uh, internally. Well, I say internally, it's just me and Mindy. Um, but, uh, we, we have talked about the idea of potentially, uh, doing an add-on um, to maybe not a full day, but maybe going to one, two o'clock. Uh, as an option for people, they can still do the half-day, and if they want to do an extended day at junior camp, they could, it'd be an added fee. Um. I'll be probably, I'm not proposing that this year, honestly, just because it's me and Mindy. Um, I, I'm not I'm not prepared to try to add that right now.
Okay, makes sense. I have had, because I've had a lot of parents, my daughter's going to, uh, kindergarten next year. So I know that a lot of parents are looking for a program where the kids can start to slowly get accustomed into going later. You know, before they make a job. So I know that there is definitely an interest for that out there.
Yeah, it's definitely not lost on us. We've talked about it. I, I think it's something that we, we will push to try to do next year. But I, I think just this year, right now, with it just being two of us, uh, I, I, I don't want to take on more than we, we can.
Okay, and just the difference, and then the senior camp is from what, from what grades to what grade?
Senior camp is first through, going into first through, uh, fifth grade.
Third grade, okay. And then teen is just anything after that?
Teen travel is going into sixth through, I think we offer, if I'm not correct, I'm pretty sure it's ninth grade, we offer it till.
Okay, gotcha. Okay, thanks.
Yep. Um, so as you can see, uh, the increase to the senior camp and, uh, what that increase in, in dollar amount is, uh, for the school district and for the residents.
So those would, that would generate about 55,000 more, assuming we had the same enrollment?
Assuming we have the same enrollment, um, we would, that, that would be, um, where we would be at. And, and, you know, last year was our, probably our strongest enrollment. Um, and while we're talking about enrollment, I did mention that in my memo, uh, you know, senior camp, we were at about 245-ish, uh, for each session, which is the highest I've seen, uh, which is great, uh, but I, I would also like to have kind of a soft cap on senior camp of 250. And the reason for that is one, busing, you know, if we start going any higher, I, I'm looking, I would have to introduce another bus, which isn't the end of the world. Um, but, you know, I don't know if we're really gonna get much higher than where we're at. Um, so adding another bus for 10 kids really wouldn't be very cost efficient. And, and the buses at, at 245, uh, it, it's tight with five buses when we go on trips. So, so that would be one reason to kind of propose a soft cap of 250. Another reason is, uh, you know, just staffing numbers. We always seem to have enough, but we're always right, leading right up into that day of hiring a couple more staff to have enough. Um, so, so having a soft cap gives us, you know, okay, we know we need this many staff, whereas for the time I've been here, it's kind of always been really, I, I've never been told of a cap, um, so it's kind of like, okay, this is what we got. We gotta figure out how many to get, we gotta find staff. Um, so I, just like a soft cap of a pretty high number, in my opinion, uh, that we're not, I don't think we'll go too much higher than that in the future.
What does a soft cap mean?
Uh, just, so with registration, 250 kids would be our max.
So that doesn't sound much. How is it a soft cap?
Well, I say soft cap, so if we're, we're five over and, you know, there, there's within the groups and our ratio works out, okay, we, we, we'll be able to take them. There's still, we can still squeeze a little bit on the bus. But, you know, having a soft cap is just a number to kind of stay around, but we can have some flexibility. That's why I say soft cap.
Because if I understand you correctly, what you're really saying is if we get five extra kids, that's probably fine. If we get 15, that could be a problem. If we get 50, then that might be fine again, because then it's, uh, like a new bus and, you know, hopefully the new salary rates give you the ability to hire more counselors, all right?
Correct, correct. And then, well, and, and another part of that too is, you know, I, and again, I don't think we'd get another 50, but, and who knows? Um, you know, the pool and our time at the pool, trying to get that many kids between nine and 12 and the proper amount of time with the proper amount of supervision, because the pool, our ratios do change, so we're moving staff around. Our ratios have to increase based on swim ability. Uh, you know, 250 is about our limit to try to get everyone in there with the proper amount of time and supervision. But, a-again, that's why I say soft cap. So based on seeing what we have, you know, we'll make adjustments, but I, I'd like to just put it out there that, you know, th- this is kind of our, our, our goal and our, our, our max.
Understood, and I think it seems reasonable. Anybody disagree?
Yeah, definitely. I mean, and we've always talked about how hard it is to compare, like, you know, these, these a lot younger kids can deal with these, you know, these kids that they're working with, so many of them, and it's hot outside and everything, or they can just work at like ShopRite and, you know, be in air conditioning and put some more. So it just, it makes it somewhat competitive at least.
Especially the freezer department.
Right.
Right, right. Um, alright, so that, that's camp. Uh, any other questions about camp?
Yeah, are you gonna handle the scholarship program the same way this year?
Yes. No, no reason to change it. It seems to have worked. You know, we, we asked for the, the, the SNAP program or proof of free reduced school lunch program. At the school, they get us that and we, we, uh, you know, we award the scholarship.
Good, and do you feel like there was good awareness of it this last year?
Yeah, considering, well, uh, interestingly enough, we probably gave out the most scholarships, uh, in the teen travel, which, you know, was you know, costly. Um, uh, but yes, I would say there was awareness. Um, you know, we went, we went over uh, what we had put in that account, um, but, you know, we, we made it work for, for the kids that needed it.
Great, thank you.
All right, I should share back pool rates?
Yes, please. So with the pool, uh, very similar to camp, um, just less of an increase, because we already have them, uh, you know, higher. Uh, currently they're at 14 and the gate attendant is at 11. Um, same, same kind of scenario as camp. Minimum wage keeps going up. You know, quality applicants, especially with the pool. The pool in my, this was one of the best years as far as staffing goes. Uh, we had a great staff. We had plenty of staff. Uh, I'm hoping to keep that staff and have a higher, a higher retention of staff. So giving them a slight increase to get them, uh, closer or at minimum wage, I believe it is 16, uh, I think would be, would go a long way to keeping good staff. Um, so I'm proposing to increase the lifeguards $2 to $16 an hour and increase our gate attendant $3, uh, from 11 to $14 an hour. Uh, this increase would be about $25,000 increase to that budget line.
Okay.
Uh, so to make that up, uh, the only real, I mean, we, we'll offer as much swim lessons as we can to try to, you know, add more revenue into that. Um, and, and try to come up with some other programming to bring in some revenue. Um, but, uh, I'm looking to increase the pool fees, uh, by 10%, uh, which would based on last year's revenue, give us about $27,000 increase, uh, to cover the increase to, um, salaries. Uh, so if you look below, I've got a comparison chart of our fees from last year and, uh, the new fees I'm proposing and what the increase, uh, looks like. I'm also looking to extend, uh, just as a, a nice gesture and, and, you know, I, I think other municipalities do, uh, an early bird as well. We did it last year. We didn't do it for a very long. I think we only did it for about two weeks. Uh, I'm looking to do it about a month, and that seems to be what a couple of the other municipalities around us do. Uh, so what I would propose is the early bird would be last year's rate, and then on May 15th, uh, the rate would go up.
And do you have any sense for the percentage of people who enroll in the early bird, especially when there's an incentive like this?
Last year, it wasn't, it was pretty low. Um, having it be a longer period of time, I, I'm would be slightly higher. Um, but, you know, a part, part of my thought process and I'm extending this too is, you know, we're, you know, God willing, we're gonna have a new pool built and, um, you know, I, I'm, we're gonna have to look at fees again with that, so I, I didn't want to get too crazy. I'm trying to increase, uh, before, you know, we, we seriously have to look at, uh, our fee structure with the new pool.
Okay, sounds reasonable to me.
Yeah, I agree with that rationale.
Any other questions, comments? All right, Mike, thank you. Thank, and thanks to you and Mindy. I know you guys are drinking from a fire hose here.
Until we get you. We're getting by, we're getting by.
Staffed back where you belong here.
Yep.
And on that note, um, what we're seeking to do is get authorization to hire under a title. Uh, Mike, do you know what that formal title is referred to?
I don't know what the county's gonna refer to. What, the, the, the description and the title I've found that we're asking for, uh, was, was very specific to a school district program like ours, like Panther Club. Uh, so basically, we're, we're looking for, we're asking the county for a director of a school-aged childcare program. Um, and I, I know we've touched on this a little bit, but this would basically give us, uh, you know, a we're gonna focus on Panther Club. We're hiring for Panther Club. We're gonna go out and look for, recruit for someone who works in childcare, wants to be a director of a childcare program, because that's what we have. Instead of trying to cram a, a rec person who just, it's not, it's not their wheelhouse. It's not what the rec professionals are looking for, looking to do. So we're trying to look at this differently. Um, I think I got an email with Alyssa yet today. Um, I think they're just on the final review stage of that description and, uh, title. Uh, so hopefully, I, I, again, I don't know how quickly they're gonna move. It's been a little slow. Uh, but hopefully in the next couple of weeks.
Why do you would say that?
Hopefully in the next couple of weeks, we'll have a title and a description that we can use and go and advertise for the position.
All right, from your mouth to God's ears, please.
Yep.
Please, civil service. All right.
I had a quick question about, um, signups, just, um, for these signups that we're gonna be doing, where maybe there's some limitations. Um, I know that from some parents who try to sign up for like the
Clubs.
The clubs, like the holiday and like the after-school stuff. And now I think, I don't know if you guys have opened for winter break and spring break, but some people said that they're logging in at nine and by like 9:03, everything is sold out. Is that, do you have to call in to?
Yeah, I mean, so, y-yeah, yes. So, y- the, the the realization with the, especially with the after-school clubs, tho- those are the ones that go quickly and, and, and they go quickly because there's only so many spots in an hour-long class. So the majority of our classes, we take a maximum of 12. In the gym classes, we'll take up to 20. Some of the kindergarten classes, the teachers, it, it, you know, it can be a little challenging, so they take 10. We try to take as many kids as we can. Um, but yes, you know, some of those programs, they, they could be logged in and gone through the process, and at 12:01, they've been waitlisted and blocked out of a class. You know, we've talked quite a bit internally about it. Um, I, I'm real hesitant and, and we can have further conversation, but I'm real hesitant to try to do something much more drastic as far as, you know, creating a lottery. It, it's just, it, it's just that much more work when the internet and the registration system is kind of a lottery in itself.
Well, it just, Mike, one, uh, you know, my wife seems to regularly win the lottery, so I shouldn't, uh, complain. But, uh, there is sort of a little bit of a native advantage, uh, for people who have reliable wifi. And you should be aware that you can unintentionally be prejudicing the system against less, uh, residents with lower rankups.
Okay, I never, I never, I never thought about that, that angle.
How would we address that?
I, I spend my life in library world, so this is one thing they know is that stable access to the internet is actually one of the biggest divides between people who have uh, wealth and don't. Uh, and you have so a lot of system ultimately would be fairer, even though I'm going to get in trouble when I go to home, if, uh, if that's what happens. Well, that, that's kind of what I was thinking about, because I, it seems like it just kind of luck that it comes down to be, which the signup in itself can be luck, but no one really knows if you got, where you got in and you logged in, and you're, because there's a lot of people logging in at the same exact time.
Like getting Taylor Swift tickets.
Exactly. And so I feel like for that, at least you accept that you might get it and you might not. But for this, and if it continues to happen on multiple times, or you're trying to register for something, I think it's, it, it makes it a really frustrating situation that, you know, and then if if we see that the same person is, is getting picked every single time, it really doesn't open up the opportunity for others. So if, let's say, you were to get picked and you've already gotten picked for a pass, well, maybe that's something to consider to give more of a chance to, to others, because there's a lot of people, there's a lot of these programs are awesome and that's, so it's either we figure out a way to do that or figure out a way to add more numbers. It doesn't seem like adding more numbers is really the easiest way to fix it, but at least possibly there was a some kind of prior lottery where, you know, we say, look, these are the people that are gonna be able to register if you're ready to enter. I think it at least feels a little better than jumping online and thinking maybe you missed on dinner, maybe thinking you or wifi wasn't as fast or something. Just opens it up a little more to just being a more fair process. In my opinion.
Yeah, I, I, I can, I can sit down with Mindy and we, we can talk it over some more and maybe come back to you guys with uh, maybe some sort of an option. I mean, I, I have some ideas in my head. Um. It, it's still not gonna change the fact that people are not gonna get what they want. Uh, there's still, it, there, there's only so many spaces, but I, I do, the wifi thing honestly is something I never actually considered. Um, so I'm not against it. I'm open to it. We, we can explore, uh, maybe come up with a couple of ideas and, and get back to you guys um, for potentially the spring.
Okay, yeah. Thank you, appreciate that.
Mm-hmm.
All right, great. Thank you, Mike.
Okay.
Much appreciated, and thank you, Mindy. Are you on there? If you are, thank you. If you're not, Mike will tell you that we said that.
All right, thank you, guys.
Thanks.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
All right, um. We, uh, we're gonna have a conversation, um, with, uh, Anthony Carr, but he is unable to be here, uh, tonight, uh, regarding the water tanks. Do you wanna make that report?
Hello, I, I sent, uh, an email to you, Mr. Merritt, if you're able to share a screen there. And I can, um, distribute to the rest of the board, but Anthony gave a summary of the history of the tanks and then our timeline moving forward.
All right, hold on.
We can obviously dive into it in more, uh, more detail if he's, uh, able to make it.
Okay.
Um, so that top section there is just the history. Um, but essentially, uh, where we're at right now is, um, the two tanks have to be replaced. Uh, they do date back to 1905. Um, obviously.
Can't get another century out of them?
Right, right. Um, so obviously, uh, significant investment has been made in that, to both those tanks over, over that time, but uh, we've gotten the most my original, uh, we, we can out of that. Um, so moving forward, as you know, we've engaged with it in current to do a, um, water system audit and rate study. Uh, we are looking to have a draft available for after review in February and then get them before the board in March. Um, obviously, February, most of February, March is dedicated to our budget process. So at the tail end of that, they'll come in. Um, that'll give us the blueprint for structuring our rates in order to afford the debt service on uh, the water tanks. But the, the other aspect of this as well is, um, putting together a firm capital plan when it comes to, uh, water main replacements and relineing. Um, the village has been very proactive throughout its history in getting in front of that, and we want to continue to do that, but in, in order to have a, uh, a firm plan, we want to look at our rates, look at how to structure them. Um, so in talking with Anthony lately, this budget process will do probably a nominal increase to the water rates, maybe another, uh, one and a half to 2% water rate increase and then be able to lean on that blueprint, that strategy that would have occurred and will provide us with. So, um, that's what this timeline basically details out. Uh, again, will be before the board in March. And then it lays out, um, uh, the plan forward and identified, well, creating the RFP for the design and awarding that, uh, included both from there.
Any indication of whether we might get some state funding for this?
Yes, so we've, um, tasked our, uh, grant writers with that, had a meet, our monthly meeting with the grant writers this week. Looks like, um, once we start the design process, uh, that's when we'll have a, um, we could be at the stage in the process where we'd be um, uh, so we'd, we'd meet thresholds, uh, for grant funding. Uh, we're also looking at, we need some people to finance the project. The DTC has some loan, no interest, uh, loan program, so that may.
Stamp tax, E-tax, document stuff?
Yeah. Uh, so more to come there, but, uh, certainly. And right now, you know, we're looking at, um, uh, debt service on that, that's probably ranging from 450 to 450 thousand dollars.
So, yeah, it's a lot. What's a, what's the, um, uh, bonded periods for a water tank?
So it can go up to 40 years.
Okay.
Um, so that's a decision we'll have to make, because at some, at some point, you're, you're, you're hurting.
The interest rate.
Exactly. Um, so we'll, we'll look at, and that, that number, uh, is a blended, so.
Yeah.
Anywhere between, maybe.
Yeah, because it's like, what, uh, for an average household, it's gonna be maybe $4,000 or like that kind of the interest cost?
Well, no, there's, um, oh, 32%. Yeah, we'd have to look at.
So $200. $100.
Yeah, about 100, 100, oh, over the whole.
Yeah, over the whole.
Yeah, right, that's about 100.
Yeah. Yeah, it's real.
Yes. So, but it's, um, one of the most important investments to make here. Water, water tanks are extremely vital.
You can't get the water tank till you drive an electric flywheel or something.
Not yet. Maybe when they're, they're gonna do the zero.
Their first, first thing happens. So we, we started a half an hour late and we still finished the roads?
Well, that's gonna be good.
I was like, wait.
We just didn't have a, uh, 72-page.
Right?
Yes.
So I knew.
Absolutely.
The search, my name is a puzzle, but it was like, uh, adventure. I've got the kind of whatever. The last ones I have. That was the worst. The power.
Yeah.
I'm like, it changes, you know? The mayor.
Third mayor. But also, I read a bunch about his biography. And a lot of things.
Oh, okay.
Too much to summarize. A little bit.
Okay, wow, so there were two. Wow. So there were two.
They owned the whole. The whole thing up there.
Something like that.
Inquisition.
Two minutes, we'll get a start.
Followed the Revolutionary War. Slaughter burned, they burned their own. You know, obviously they'll ratize. They wrote a non-discrimination clause into their school.
No. Yeah. The man.
I think we want to manage this. Like, let's say, let's say these folks like, you know, say, close to eight, nine, ten, eleven, seven. Uh, sure. Because you're saying it's only who you want to speak for. Or just ask people to raise their hand.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah.
All right. It's eight o'clock. Welcome all. Good evening. Uh, welcome to the Village Board of Trustees meeting. Today is Monday, July eighth. Uh, our first order of business is our annual youth recognition night, which is why we have both a bit of an audience here at A Wheeler and a bit of an audience uh, via Zoom. So we have some folks joining us by Zoom, some in the room. Um, as long as I have a captive audience, let me make one announcement. And that is a week from today, Monday, January fifteenth is Martin Luther King Day. And, uh, the Interfaith Clergy Association has, uh, planned an event that will take place at, uh, St. John's Episcopal Church at eleven AM on Monday, the fifteenth. So anyone who is, uh, able, we would have encouraged you to join uh, the Interfaith Clergy Association for a celebration of Martin Luther King's life and a moment to, uh, consider his lessons for today's work. So that's a week from today, Monday, the fifteenth at eleven AM. Uh, meanwhile, I'm going to switch to the podium and we will begin our youth recognition. Well, I'm here, Mr. Zoom, right? So trying to make sure all of our electronics are doing roughly the right thing. So on an annual basis, we invite uh, not-for-profits and social service organizations in the Village of Pleasantville to nominate uh, young people who have been volunteers in the course of a year. Uh, all of them at a very significant level. We're not just talking about uh, young people who come and, an hour and are never seen again. And what is, is clear every year, and this year is no exception, is that so much of the good stuff that goes on in our community takes place and not just with the assistance of young volunteers, but because of them. And, uh, I'm sure we will hear, and Steve Bates is nodding his head from the farm market. Uh, some of these trains won't run unless we have the kinds of help that we get from all of you and from all of you, uh, on Zoom. And so uh, it is just a pleasure in a little way to invite you to Village Hall, virtually or in person, uh, and to say thank you for all that you have done. So a couple of points to make. Uh, first is we have certificates for you. We're going to be mailing all of you, uh, uh, a, uh, small value, but heartfelt Lecheros gift card, uh, which is a, a little something to say thank you. Uh, we have certificates for you. If we have spelled your name wrong, do not remain silent. Uh, we tried to get it right, but if we didn't get it right, you do not need to suffer with a certificate uh, not spelled right. And if by any chance we miss any one of you, please let us know because we will say thank you. So, um, in each case, we'll invite anybody who might be here from an organization to talk a little bit about what went on this year. If anyone hears too, that's not necessary. It can be an adult leader, could be, could be a student and, uh, we will start with the Pleasantville Volunteer Ambulance Corps. So if there is anyone in the room that would like to comment about this year with the ambulance corps, or possibly anyone on Zoom, you could raise your hand and David can, uh,
I think Caitlin is on here.
Yeah. Well, it certainly isn't necessary. So let me just call out the names. And if you're here in the room, come on up and, uh, get a certificate. If you're not here in the room, uh, we are looking for you on Zoom and we'll be mailing this out to you. So uh, first for the Pleasantville Volunteer Ambulance Corps is Clara Nielsen-Pepish. This is a name we will hear again. It's another light motif of this evening's event. Folks who volunteer in one place almost always volunteer somewhere else. Uh, and, uh, it's really, really satisfaction. Pleasantville Volunteer Ambulance Corps, Caroline Morton. Zachary Nielsen-Pepish. Volunteerism runs in the family. Dana Ballin. Sarah Brojbeeman. And lastly, the Volunteer Ambulance Corps, Sam Siget. All right. Uh, as mentioned, we'll pack these up and send them by mail along with that gift card. Next group is the Emmanuel, our, uh, bell ringers. Anyone here from that group? Any?
If you're online, just raise your hand and I'll find you. And, and.
Yeah. So those of you who may not have heard it, it's an extraordinary bell ringing choir that is centered at the Emmanuel Lutheran Church on Mandel Road. Been going on for many years and really quite a remarkable uh, thing. And I wholeheartedly encourage anybody who hasn't heard it and, uh, to, to go to one of their concerts. If you have heard it, I'm sure you're going anyway. So, uh, two folks called out for Emmanuel Bell Ringers. One is Chloe Ramji-Lavois. And the other is Regina Whipke. Next up is the Holy Innocence Social Group. Anybody here like to speak about what that group did this year? All right. Hank McCourtney. Emmett McDermott. Catherine Collins. Brandon Moran. Jaclyn O'Connor. And last in the Holy Innocence Youth Group, Jack Sullivan. Pleasantville Volunteer Fire Department. We have two honorees tonight. Anyone from the fire department wish to say anything? Those two honorees are Benjamin White and Johann Wee. Arc Stages. Two honorees. Bellamy Mortis and Eva Buchi. Great stuff. Those two I know from personal experience. Uh, from the Pleasantville Community Synagogue, Trevor Gallin.
You do have, uh, Rabbi Ben.
Yeah, hang on. Oh, hey, Rabbi Ben.
Hi. This is actually Rabbi Shoshana from Rabbi Ben's computer.
Oh, Rabbi Shoshana from Rabbi Ben's.
I don't know if I can turn on my video, but I'm very, very proud of Trevor. I have been Trevor's rabbi for three years and now Rabbi Ben is also his rabbi. And we love every Sunday morning when Trevor comes to work in our Hebrew school volunteering with our students from K through seven. And, um, he always brings a joyful, um, spirit and, and a love of learning and making a difference. So congratulations, Mazel to have Trevor.
Trevor, if you're listening, congratulations. We are so glad.
Sorry, Adam. He's on the Zoom listening.
All right. Thank you, Trevor. Uh, we'll send their certificate and, and again, a small gift card, uh, as we will to all the honorees tonight. Next group up is the, uh, VIP Sports Program. Any speakers would like to report on?
Yeah, hang on for one second. I believe. Kathleen Wallace, does that sound right?
Hi, how is everybody?
Good. How are you?
Very good. Thank you so much for having us here tonight. Um, some of you may be familiar with VIP Sports. We're a local organization that provides a quality sports experience for children in our local community of Pleasantville whose mental, emotional or physical challenges prevent them from being successful participants within mainstream sports teams. We are so fortunate to have uh, close to fifty high school volunteers that work as not only volunteers, but mentors and friends to our athletes. And they really teach them not only about learning the game, but about socialization, getting fit and having fun. So we are so fortunate to have so many amazing volunteers from the high school really making this such a successful and positive experience for our athletes and our families. So we really deeply appreciate everything that they do for us and so happy we can honor so many of our great, um, high school students. So thank you very much.
Thank you. And, and thank you for all you do for the leadership of this, uh, group. Such, uh, a really, uh, Pleasantville-like thing that has such a great history and, uh, has knit together all the various folks in this community in really extraordinary ways. So, um, thank you so much to Pleasantville VIP, uh, volunteers, Allison Vamosi. Stephen Pettis. Hank McCourtney. Caitlin Burr. Erin O'Mara. Alyssa Chiano. Jack Chisholm. Eric Nanaj. Kaylee Sullivan. Nicholas Wee. Jonah Glass. Kai Martins-Wallace. Nicholas Natale. Luke McGarry. Katie Willby. And last, but certainly not least, Katie Quatres. Thank you all. What an extraordinary program the VIP Sports Program is. Uh, and, uh, uh, so pleased after having done this for so many years to see the transition from one generation of leaders and one generation of kids to the next. Uh, just a, a seamless transition, making sure that such a great program, uh, continues. So next up, we have the farmer's market. And let me invite our bow-tied farm market manager, Steve Bates. Unbow tied farm market president, Peter Rogan.
So this will be for you to share.
That's me?
Yeah.
No, you did that.
Hold on. Let me get away.
Doing this with props.
Yeah.
Well, well beyond us.
You have this same order. They're in this order. We believe you, but you should check. All right. Welcome, farmer market.
I'll just hold this here. I'm, I'm just going to do a quick intro and say that, uh, our market, your, your market, our community's market, uh, is now in its, well, we've been doing this twenty-six years and we've been running it since two thousand thirteen. And the market, as you know, it would cease to exist. It really would without volunteers. We started with one intern. We now have twenty-five youth interns. We have twenty adult volunteers. And it, it's an incredible undertaking. And as we've grown and found all these volunteers, we've been able to produce the market, be able to make the market bigger. We have music every week, kids' activities. We couldn't do that without the volunteers. And, um, I'll say one other thing before Steve gets to the names. I don't know how many of you stick around to see how hard your kids work in the market, but they have a spring in their step. They work with focus and dedication uh, with minimal supervision. This is no way you could supervise that many.
No.
And, and I don't think anyone want, want you to actually see how hard they work in the market because then the expectations of they would have to do at home. Um, but they work incredibly hard in all kinds of weather. They, they set everything up and we couldn't do it without our great interns. So I'm going to turn it over to Steve to say a few more things, I think.
Yeah, I have a few more. Only a few.
Um, because there's a game tonight.
Yeah. Briefer than years past. Um, I, I will, I will say, um, so I'm Stephen Bates, Executive Director of Food Chester, the nonprofit that helps to, uh, run the villages farmer's market and um, in one of my roles is to help coordinate the intern program. Um, that's one of the privileges of the role. I may have my roles. Um, it, it, working with these kids is incredible. They're great. Um, there's a lot of things interns say that rate as some of my favorites. Um, when they confirm with an exclamation mark each week in their emails, they have to confirm. They often do it with like this emphasis. It's a nice little thing to see. Um, something they say that I think kind of speaks to what a lot of these kids are like. Um, and which I marvel at and I debate with them is at the end of their shifts, they'll often turn around as they're heading out and just say, thank you. Which, okay, that's polite, makes sense. You taught them well. But, you know, consider the position I'm in. They just got done hard schlepping, assisting, solving stuff outdoors uh, year round, weekly in all weather, in all weather. And they're thanking us. They're thanking the staff as they leave. And I always say to them, I think we should be thanking you. You know, you did the schlepping. You guys are the ones that make this thing really work. And it is really important to point that out. The village's weekly community event, the farmer's market really could not succeed the way it does without this vital contribution that these young people do in teams and as individuals. You know, when they come up and they say, we cruised for chaos to see if everything is good. And everything is good. And I'll say, you, did you see anything wrong? Yeah, but we solved it. So this is what they're like. As we get to the thanking at hand, I'll start with two graduates. One has not yet got back to college and another has. Uh, so with five years of volunteer service, uh, having put some time in before heading out to college to her already impressive and weighty resume as an intern, Aleona Myrick, will you please come? With six years volunteers, I, uh, thank Annie Rogan. Now Annie has headed back to school. So, uh, what we'll do is we'll just take this and this and we'll give it to Dad.
Thank you.
And now in alpha order, we'll thank our current 2023-24 interns. When I call your name, if you'll come up so we can thank you. Michael Bucci, will you come on up? Alexa Carrero, will you come on up? And if you're not here, we'll mail out, as we've said, your certificate. Miko Castardo, I don't think he's here tonight, but another great intern. Thank you for his help. Colin Campbell, if you'll come up. Julian Giblehouse is not here tonight, but we have this to go with his certificate and we thank him for his service. Harrison Kaufman, don't believe is here tonight, but we as well have a letter. And actually, we might have got it mixed up, aren't our orders here? This is going to go to Colin. Colin, I see what you got. We might have given you the wrong information there. So Harrison Kaufman, thank you for your service. And so this is for Harrison as well. This is for Julian, if we're into the Julian. Jacob Moss, will you come on up so we can thank you? Thank you, sir. Thanks, Jacob. Erin O'Mara was mentioned. I think in the VIP program, often she does work with us and then races off to work in that program. Very impressive. I know she's not here tonight, but if she's listening in, thank you so much, Erin, for your support of the market and the community. Zachary Nielsen-Papish and Eli Nielsen-Papish both contribute as interns and we thank them very much for their contributions as well. Montana Papard, I think we'll hand over some. So we'll hand this to Dad and we thank Montana. She jumped right in this year and became an intern quickly and really leaned in right away. Nicholas Peters, if you're listening online, Nicholas, thank you so much for your help at the market. David Reinhardt, Reinhardt, if you'd come up. David, here you go. Take this as well and thank you very much. Great work. Alex Rogan, if you would come up as well. Thanks, Alex. Great work. Okay, Elsie Sable and McKinsey Sable are two sisters that work quite hard at the market. I don't see them here tonight. If they're listening in, McKinsey and Elsie, thank you so much for your work for the community and at the market. Mikey Salvati, will you come on up so we can thank you? Mikey, there you go. Thanks a lot. Yep. Jaden has dance class, I know that. So Jaden Sarabin, we're gonna give to her. Her information, we'll mail that out, but she does a great job. She also coordinated a new initiative. She took on the sole ownership of scheduling what was called the Zero Waste Station. For all the waste that we produced at the market, Jaden found middle school kids that were willing to sort it. And, you know, that just says enough right there. I'm so impressed. That ended up to work out really well and we really cut down waste. We're not the music festival, but Jaden got us close. Marco Suarez, will you come up, please? Can you thank him? Marco, here you go, and thank you so much. Great job. And Aloy Sullivan, I don't see him here this evening, but we have his information. We'll send it out. And Aloy, thank you so much for your contributions. That's 22 names. There are three others that don't live within our village rocker. It's a great team. It's a privilege working with them and we really do rely on you and thank you so much. Thanks for coming out.
Thanks, as always, to Steve and to Peter. I'm a weekly farm market person. Jaden taught me the ropes the first like two weeks with the zero waste. Then after that, I get the nod that I know what to do. It's just evidence of what I said at the outset, that so many young people are doing so many good things. And I was amused by Steve saying farm market interns are out there in the search for chaos to fix it. And as I have said sometimes in the past, no more significantly than now. It feels as though the kind of work we get from these young people and the contribution they make to our community means that maybe they'll head out into the world and find chaos and fix it because they've gotten to know that there's enough chaos to fix. But thank you for all the work you do here and for the very significant contributions you make to all these organizations and to the literally hundreds, in some cases, thousands of people who benefit from the services you all provide. So as mentioned, if we have stored up your spelling, you've got a lot to know and to fix it. Those of you who aren't here, we're gonna mail these out. And those who were here, we have a small gift card from Lucio's. We'll send you that as well. So thank you all, and I invite you all to stay for our Dry as Dust Resolutions budget. I got one more, which is Appalachia and Service Project. Gail, Zarek, are you there?
Can you hear me okay?
We can. My apologies. I lost track of the list there.
No worries. You heard quite the list.
I have the ASP list in front of me. Can you let us know a little bit? This was kind of an important year, right? You were back after a COVID delay.
That's right. Yeah. Thank you so much, Mayor Shearer, and also the Village Board for recognizing the youth volunteers in this community. It's greatly appreciated. As you well know, over many years, the Pleasantville Appalachia Service Project or ASP volunteers have gotten together with youths as well as adults to travel to Central Appalachia in the summer for a home repair mission project. We did not do it for three years during the pandemic due to health concerns. But in 2023, we decided it was safe enough to resume. We took nine youths from Pleasantville High School, a number of recent Pleasantville High School graduates and some older folks, for a total of 21 volunteers this year to the small town of Rupert, West Virginia, where we repaired and rebuilt two homes. One was a trailer home owned by a grandfather who was taking care of his two grandsons. The other was a house owned by a couple who had undergone a devastating house fire. And we were helping to rebuild this home after it was virtually burned down to the ground. So it was tremendous team building for our volunteers, tremendous connection with people who live below the poverty line and might otherwise be kind of freezing or otherwise suffering this winter. I'm really grateful for the nine youths who came. None of them had done this before. None of their peers had done this before. All of their, all of the most recent youth volunteers had been in 2019, who they didn't know. So I was really glad that we had nine youths who were intrepid enough to try this and get us going again. We hope to do it again this year. And again, we're so grateful for your support. As a quick note, this is a volunteer effort that's run under the oversight of the Pleasantville Presbyterian Church, but is open to any member of the community. While it needs a home, it's open to people regardless of whether they have any church affiliation. And it's always dependent upon community support. If there's anyone listening who's interested in participating this year, you can contact us through the Pleasantville Presbyterian Church. And again, Peter, we're really grateful for the recognition. Thank you.
Well, all the thanks go to you, Gail, and to the folks who have done this for so many years and to the young people who did it this year. You have been an anchor in, in recent years, in difficult times to keep the flame alive on this extraordinary program. And I have done this long enough and seen enough kids who have gone to this program and some of them have turned into your adult volunteers and work on a daily basis with a colleague of mine who's an adult volunteer. And know from that personal experience, not only what a life-changing thing it is for the folks you help, but also what a life-changing experience it is for the people who go, not only to gain the benefit of helping folks, but to come back with a new perspective on the fortunate lives we lead here and to remind us of the need to reach out and to share our prosperity in whatever way we can by helping others. So thank you, Gail, Zarek. Thank you to the Pleasantville Presbyterian Church. And thank you to these young people who went this year. Catherine Collins, Chris Coyle, Hank McCourtney, Dermot McSpedden, Luke O'Hara, Louis Sedaw, Joseph Sokic, Tommy Sokic, and Jack Sullivan. So have you got dates for the next year, Gail?
We do. We're going in the middle of July, the third week of July this year. And we don't know exactly where, but it'll most likely be the southern part of West Virginia.
All right. Well, we look forward to honoring the group that goes next year, this coming, in this coming summer, and very possibly an even bigger group than you had in your bounce-back year of 2023. Thank you, Gail, and thank you to these young people. Again, just great stuff that goes on, sometimes behind the scenes, sometimes in very visible ways, but really extraordinary moments when young people step forward and help other people in various ways. All right. So let me just see if I had a couple of other announcements to make. I already mentioned at the outset, a week from today, Monday, January 15, at 11:00 a.m. at St. John's is an interfaith program for Martin Luther King Day. So I encourage anybody who could possibly attend to join that event. It was done, I think, for the first time last year and was really a very, very nice event. And I encourage you to come this year. We have a village election coming up on Tuesday, March 19. Two trustee seats, David and Michael. Michael not running for reelection. David is, and the mayor's seat, I am, running for reelection. So that election takes place on March 19. Anyone interested in running for office can check the Westchester County Board of Elections page and get all of the details. Then lastly, mark your calendars for the Pleasantville Music Festival, which is Saturday, July 13. We've just been through December Fest, where there were some special discounts available, but there remain some special discounts available for folks who buy tickets upfront now before we announce the lineup. So get the to PleasantvilleMusicFestival.com and mark your calendar for Saturday, July 13. Two final things to remind folks of. COVID, RSV, flu seem to be more and more evident in recent weeks. Perhaps the winter, perhaps the holidays, whatever it might be. But we encourage folks to be conscious of that in their goings on. And I certainly encourage folks to get the vaccines for all of the above. And then lastly, our next meeting is two weeks from today, which is Monday, January 22. Anybody else have announcements to make?
Not at the moment. Five minutes from now, maybe.
All right. With that, is there a motion to open the continuation of a public hearing concerning the wetlands permit application for reconstruction of the village pool? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
This is a public hearing that we opened at our previous, at a previous meeting and held open and are now opening again for any comment from anybody who might wish to offer thoughts, after which we will likely close this public hearing, having fulfilled the requirements for it. I can just share my screen and Eric, you can just give people the quick overview. There we go.
Sure. So our village code has a, what's referred to as a wetlands buffer. Any work with a 50-foot buffer area requires a wetlands permit. The pool reconstruction project proposes a new culvert, which would touch the wetlands buffer both on the inlet side and the outlet side, minimal impacts to the wetlands area. And this is highlighted in the drawing that the mayor is showing now. The village engineer, the consulting engineer, all see this having very minimal impacts to the wetlands area.
In essence, all this work is taking place in areas that are already significantly.
Correct.
All right. Any comments from a member of the board, comments from the public, either in person or via Zoom? Right? Seeing none? They're more to close the public hearing.
I said, second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Public hearing has been closed. Back to where it was. All right. With that, we can head to our resolutions. Number, number one of the year 2024. All people, share my screen.
Whereas the village of Pleasantville, the village is proposed to reconstruct the village pool located in Manhattan Park, the village-owned property located at 232 Lake Street, designated on the tax map as section 106.12, block 1, block 1. And whereas the project includes demolition and reconstruction of the village pool, installation of drainage improvements, including a new cover and related improvements, proposed action of project. And whereas the proposed action is classified as an unlisted action pursuant to this Environmental Quality Review Act, SECR. And whereas on November 30, 2023, the village board trustees authorize circulation of its notice of intent to declare itself the lead agency pursuant to SECR. And whereas 30 days passed on circulation of the village board trustees' notice of intent to all identified involved and interested agencies, and no objections were received. Therefore, the board trustees is the lead agency pursuant to SECR. And whereas the proposed action requires approval of the village wetland permit, as well as permits, approvals, and other authorizations from the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, New York State Department of Environmental Conservation, and Westchester County Department of Health. And whereas on December 11, 2023, the village board of trustees opened a duly noticed public hearing on the wetland permit application, at which time all those interested were given an opportunity to be heard and the public hearing was continued to January 8, 2024. And whereas the board of trustees has reviewed parts one and two of the short environmental assessment form and took a hard look at each of the relevant areas of environmental concern for review of all associated materials prepared in connection with the proposed action. Now therefore be resolved that the village board of trustees hereby adopts the index negative declaration pursuant to SECR and finds that the proposed action will not result in any significant adverse environment impacts and therefore that the preparation of an environmental impact statement is not required.
Is there a second?
Second, but there's a typo in the third paragraph.
Right. Were given, not were given. Third paragraph, the bottom of it.
Yep.
Right? Okay. Then attached to this are the short environmental assessment form, part one, two, and three. And part three, narrative, the SECR location map, drawings from De Bruin Engineering and their engineering report. Comments, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved. Number two. Motion approved, number two.
Whereas the village of Pleasantville, the village has proposed to reconstruct the village pool located in Nanahegan Park on village-owned property located at 232 Lake Street and designated on the tax map as section 106.12, block 1, lot 1. And whereas the project includes demolition and reconstruction of the village pool and the installation of drainage improvements, including a new culvert and related improvements, proposed action project. And whereas the proposed action is classified as an unlisted action pursuant to the state Environmental Quality Review Act, SECR. And whereas on November 30, 2023, the village board of trustees authorize circulation of its notice of intent to declare itself lead agency pursuant to SECR. And whereas the requisite 30-day period is passed and circulation of the village board trustees' notice of intent to all identified, involved, and interested agencies, and no objections were received. Therefore, the board of trustees is the lead agency pursuant to SECR. And whereas the project is located in the village's R1 family residential zoning district and is of permitted use in such district. And whereas the project is a regulated activity pursuant to section 128-5.
182.
Oh, sorry. 182-5. Dot B4 of the village code includes more than 15 cubic yards of disturbance to the 50-foot buffer area surrounding the Nanahegan Brook and therefore requires a wetland permit from the village planning commission pursuant to chapter 182 of the village code. And whereas on October 31, 2023, the village vice superintendent of public works, Anthony Carr, P.E., submitted an application for the proposed action accompanied by a survey, detailed drawings of the proposed action, and a flood mitigation report from De Bruin Engineering, P.C. And whereas on November 27, 2023, the village board of trustees by resolution transferred the approval authority for the village wetland permit associated with the project to the village board trustees in accordance with the balancing test announced in matter of county of Monroe 72, New York 2338, 1988. And whereas upon referral to Westchester County Planning pursuant to the New York State General Municipal Law, the village received a response letter from the county dated December 11, 2023, which offered a comment that a bicycle parking area should be incorporated into the plans to provide alternative modes of transportation for visitors and employees. And whereas on December 11, 2023, the village board trustees opened a duly noticed public hearing on the wetland permit application, at which time all those interested were given an opportunity to be heard, and the public hearing was continued to January 8, 2024. And whereas on January 8, 2024, the village board of trustees closed the public hearing on the wetland permit application. And whereas on January 8, 2024, the village board of trustees adopted a negative declaration pursuant to SECR after taking a hard look at each of the relevant areas of environmental concern through review of the short PAF and all associated materials prepared in connection with the proposed action, finding that the proposed action will not result in any significant adverse environmental impacts. And whereas the village board of trustees has reviewed the proposed action in accordance with the relevant provisions of chapter 182 of the village code, now therefore be it resolved that based upon the entire record on the proposed action and the above, the village board of trustees hereby grants the village's wetland permit application.
Is there a second?
Second.
The DPW memo for the wetlands permit is attached. Comments, questions? Do we need a hard look to be in parentheses, in quotes?
According to the village judge.
Okay. It's a term of art and stuff like that. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved. David, number three. You get the short.
I try. Result of the trustees hereby approving the regular meeting held on December 21, 2024.
Is there a second? That was a brief meeting to move forward the check register. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved. My call, number four.
Result. Result, the board of trustees hereby approves the abstract of the payment claim dated January 8, 2024, fiscal year 2024, covering check numbers 109590 to 109738. The general fund, $173,645.65. The special fund, $500. The water fund, $131,047.22. The capital fund, $68,495.91. Refuge fund, $6,563.45. The total of $388,252.23. Payment claims attached.
Is there a second? Second. Comments or questions about the payment claims? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved. Back to Paul and Rick.
Whereas the village of Pleasantville is applying to the Hudson River Valley Greenway for a grant under the Greenway Conservancy Trail Grant Program for a project entitled Nanahegan Park Walkway Improvement Project located in the village of Pleasantville. Whereas the grant application requires the applicant municipality to obtain the approval slash normative governing body of the municipality or municipalities in which project will be located. Now therefore be resolved that the village of board trustees hereby authorizes the application for a grant under the Greenway Conservancy Trail Grant Program for the Nanahegan Park Walkway Improvement Project located in the village of Pleasantville.
Is there a second?
Second.
Does this refer to the wall?
Well, this is actually a new grant program that we've identified. So the, the walkway that runs from the pump house to the pool is in need of reconstruction. It's actually fits perfectly into this grant program. So we're gonna apply for it. And then the other idea, which we can discuss further about, is actually folding that work into the, the wall project, wall replacement project. Since we'll have a contract that will mobilize that area, we expect the cost to be about $30,000. So obviously, if we get grant funding, great. But if not, it's probably a drop in the bucket, given that we have a contractor.
Okay.
Great. Good enough. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved. Six. That would be you.
Okay.
You get the long.
Uh, yeah. Whereas the licensee, Jean Jacques Bakery, is the owner of a business located at 468 Bedford Road, Pleasantville, New York, known and designated on the tax assessment map of the village of Pleasantville as parcel ID number 106.5-3-15, which is located at the intersection of Marble Avenue and Bedford Road in the village of Pleasantville, with rentage along the Marble Avenue right way, the property. And whereas Jean Jacques Bakery seeks to install and maintain an uncovered semi-permanent hardwood tile patio, which is approximately five and a half inches above the grade, and having a ramp connected to the sidewalk in front of the property's main entrance to said patio, the project. And whereas Jean Jacques Bakery Incorporated has prepared and submitted architectural drawings entitled Jean Jacques Prepared by Map Studio 260 Madison Avenue, 8th floor, New York, 10016, dated October 30, 2023, sheets one through nine attached hereto as exhibit A. And whereas this agreement sets forth the rights and the obligations of the village and licensee with respect to the Jean Jacques Bakery Inc.'s use of the village right away for the project, now therefore be it resolved, the village board trustees hereby authorizes the mayor or village administrators to execute a license agreement attached hereto with Jean Jacques Bakery. And indeed, the agreement and drawings are attached.
Is there a second? So we've discussed this a couple of times in work sessions. Really, congratulations to the new owners of Jean Jacques for undertaking what I think is going to be not only a really a positive thing for their business, but an all-around positive improvement to that zone in the village of Pleasantville. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved. Seven.
Result of the trustees hereby authorizes the hiring of the following part-time available recreation assistant effective January 9, 2024. Am I correct? There are four names and? Five, 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 two, three. Okay, so I want to. Emma Lucary, budget code, as written, pay rate of $22, Panther Club, Barbara Welton, pay rate of $55, after-school instructor, Rosemary Black, pay rate of $55, preschool instructor, Karen Martin, pay rate of $55, adult instructor, and Omi Diaz Perez, pay rate of $55, actual instructor.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved. Eight, Michael.
Result that the board of trustees hereby approves the request from Holy Innocents Parish to close the Tompkins Avenue parking lot to public parking and also close Tompkins Avenue from Bedford Road to the Tompkins Avenue parking lot on Sunday, May 5, 2024, from 12:00 PM to 4:00 PM for the purposes of a parish special event.
Is there a second?
Second.
We had a couple of extra H's in Tompkins there in two locations. As we always do, remind everybody that that parking lot, the Tompkins Avenue lot at the corner of Tompkins and Manville is owned by Holy Innocents and is used much of the time for public use in some areas with the license agreement we have with the church. So thanks to them for all of that, but more, obviously, more than that, to give them back their own lot for the purpose of this special event. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved. Nine, Paul.
Result of the board trustees hereby accept the resignation of Thomas Monsi, recreation assistant, Panther Club, effective summer 21, 2023.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved. Ten, Nicole.
Result that the board trustees hereby authorizes the village administrator to enter into an agreement with the town of Mount Pleasant for the purpose of cooperative bidding for highway construction materials, and the bidding is attached.
Is there a second?
Second.
As we have done for many years, share service venture. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved. Eleven, David.
Result of the board trustees hereby accept the donation to the Clinton Street Center from Yuki Gordon in the amount of $200.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you very much, Yuki Gordon. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved. Twelve, Michael.
Result of the board of trustees hereby authorizes the donation of four Pleasantville Music Festival tickets for Pleasantville from the 41.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved. Thirteen, Paul.
Whereas on November 27, 2023, the board of trustees passed resolution number 2023-397 to approve a change order for the replacement of a pool liner in the amount of $18,500. However, the invoice reflected the amount of $18,650. Now therefore be resolved, the board trustee approves a correction to the minutes to the resolution number to reflect the change order in the amount of $18,650 and authorizes its execution.
Is there a second?
Okay.
So that's an adjustment of $150 on an $18,500 bill?
Correct.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved. Fourteen, Nicole.
Result that the board of trustees hereby appoints George LaFano as water maintenance worker, grade two, job code 0621, part-time available at an hourly rate of $125 per hour. Said appointment is on temporary basis until the village secures an alternative license, grade D, water operator.
Is there a second?
Second.
There it's a $125, no?
There's some, uh, points is repeated.
Yeah, hereby appoints.
A point.
Then a point is repeated.
Uh, so we are obligated to have a grade D, a backup grade D water license operator. Uh, we have, our foreman is grade D, but George was our backup, so.
As a full-time employee.
As a full-time employee. We can have a part-time available. That's acceptable.
He has since resigned to take another job, another opportunity.
But is willing to stay on current employee, is actually sitting for the final installment of the grade D license. So we think his passage and licensing is imminent.
I'm just asking, because $125 an hour is $250,000 a year.
Correct. Yeah, it's part-time available, so they're not, you know.
It don't incur any expense until and unless we call upon it.
Correct.
Okay. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved. Fifteen, David. There it is.
Result of the village board of trustees hereby authorizes the creation of a capital account for the purchase of an electric 2023 Machi police vehicle for the village of Pleasantville Police Department in the amount of $71,000.
Is there a second? Now, did you, did you plan the sequence? Did you figure out?
I did. I did.
Four years to the nineteen Excel spreadsheet. Pleasantville by the least guard that's fully electric.
That's right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved. Related, uh, subject.
Thank you.
Um, Mario Cenzo, our parks foreman, is touring around town in the new electric pickup truck and bio reports. Very good.
That's right. And that, and that was in the check run, too.
All right. Did we vote on that? We did. All right. Sixteen, Michael.
Result of the board of trustees and score the Pleasantville Volunteer Party Department annual parade on Friday, May 31, 2024, authorizes the no parking sign because two restrictions in effect for Friday, May 31, 2024, 4:00 PM to 9:00 PM at the following locations. Memorial Plaza, Roamer Avenue from Bedford to Clinton Street, Clinton Street from Roamer to Martling, Sunnyside from Bedford to Clinton, Martling from Bedford to Clinton, Guyon from Manville to Bedford, Orchard from Manville to Bedford, Bedford from Academy to Marble, Marble from Bedford to Manville, Manville from Marble to Grove, Manville from Grove to Brado Lane, Grove Street from Manville to Edgewood, and Edgewood from, oh, not, not done yet, Edgewood from Grove to Washington Avenue, Washington Avenue from Manville to Edgewood, and the parking spaces at the intersection of Manville and Rebecca Lane. And further resolve that the board of trustees hereby authorize the police chief to tow all vehicles violating this temporary parking restriction and to cancel the event due to adverse weather conditions or safety concerns. And further resolve, the Pleasantville Fire District shall provide prudent insurance for the events and therefore be it resolved, the board of trustees hereby approves the parade permit application from the Pleasantville Volunteer Department to conduct a parade on Friday, May 31, 2024.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mark your calendars. It's one of the great nights in the village of Pleasantville. I've always thought these streets, the ones that Michael has read off, ought to have higher value, those homes, because of their legacy to this great event. Pleasantville Parade, Friday, May 31. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved. Seventeen, Paul. There's definitely a screaming margins on that word. I'm afraid not.
Result that the board trustees hereby schedules a public hearing to consider introductory law, local law seven of 2023 to amend chapter 173-68 of the Code of the Village of Pleasantville concerning the addition of loading zone space on Cooley Street for January 22, 2024 at 8:00 PM on the second floor of the village hall, 80 Wheeler Avenue, Pleasantville, New York, 10570.
Either the, either it's wrong or the. Yeah, correction, interdiction, local law one of 2024.
Okay, that makes sense. Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
The revision is okay with the mover and the securer. Comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved. Eighteen, the last one of our first meeting of the year.
Whereas Pleasantville Lofts LLC applicant owner and developer property located at 70 Memorial Plaza, Pleasantville, New York, shown on the town of Mount Pleasant tax map as section 106. Dot 05, block 2, lot 31, receives subdivision and site plan approval from the village of Pleasantville Planning Commission by resolution dated July 10, 2019, resolution for the construction of a 79-unit rental apartment building project. And whereas pursuant to the resolution, the applicant provided to the village a site improvement performance bond issued by Atlantic Specialty Insurance Company, bond number 800070968, dated January 22, 2021, for certain public improvements pursuant to the planning permission resolution dated July 10, 2019, and as further set forth in a memorandum from village superintendent of public works, Jeffrey E. Conum, P.E., dated February 20, 2020. And whereas the applicant applicant has requested a bond reduction commensurate with the satisfactorily completed improvements. And whereas the village superintendent of public works, village engineer, engineer has reviewed the request and recommended a reduction of the bond from a total of $548,225 to $166,155.60 as itemized in an email correspondence from the village superintendent and public works, village engineer to the applicant dated January 4, 2024. Now therefore be it resolved that the village of Pleasantville Board of Trustees hereby operates a reduction in the amount of the aforementioned site improvement performance bond bearing bond number 800070968 from $548,225 to $166,155.60 subject to receipt of a rider or replacement bond and operates as the mayor or is duly authorized as a need to execute all documents as may be necessary for the purpose of effectuating this resolution.
Is there a second? Pretty straightforward. A lot of words that essentially say they've done a significant. Pretty straightforward, a lot of words that essentially say they've done a significant part of the work they were required to do, and the bond, which secures the certainty that that work will get completed, can be reduced.
That's correct.
Comments, questions? All in favor? Aye. Motion approved. That was the last of our resolutions for the first meeting of the year. Any new business or comments on any subject? Comments from any member of the public? Raise your hand in the Zoom window if you wish to say anything. There being none, let me just close on a sad note. We received the horrifying news that the supervisor of the town of Yorktown, Tom Diana, passed away suddenly last, I guess it was Friday. Really shocking report. I came to know Tom when he joined the executive committee of the Westchester Municipal Officials Association. He was at the executive committee meeting on Thursday and then passed away suddenly on Friday morning. So a very, very, very sad event. Our sympathies go, obviously, to the entire family, but to the town of Yorktown, and as has been commented widely by the folks on the executive committee who knew Tom in that role, it reminds everybody of the fragility of life and the need to take care of ourselves and take care of one another's. With that, is there a motion to adjourn? So, second. All in favor? Aye. See you on the 22nd, and again, a big shout-out to all of those young people who we honor tonight in the annual youth recognition. Thank you, and good night.